Good morning for the record. My name is Patty Allen and I have the privilege and honor of being the general manager of Fisherman's Village for the last 11 years. I've sat in that chair, right in front of Jay, for 11 years representing not only Fisherman's Village but the Punagorda Chamber of Commerce, 41 small businesses, marina guests, timeshare owners which reside within our family of Fisherman's Village. Today is the day I've been waiting for, for about 11 years now. Personally and professionally, I get to share with you what my predecessors must have done back in 1977, '75, when they too stood before council, much like yourselves, with a vision that would forever change the economy of Punagorda. I'm sharing with you our next chapter for our future. Please allow me to introduce two important people that will, and I've capitalized "will", shape our future economy in Punagorda. May I introduce John Laramore? He is the owner and president of Arcaterra Group, the owner of Fisherman's Village, which is for the record ATA Fishville. Sorry for those who don't like the name Fishville, but it is Fishville, Florida. So allow me to introduce John Laramore.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for welcoming us to your city. We've owned the property now for three years and we've learned a lot about the property, a lot about the city, and we're very excited that we have been able to retain Patty to help us take the property to the next state, which is very exciting for all of us and for the city. Thank you.
And please allow me to introduce Jeremy Hamilton, who is a partner in Fisherman's Village and actually a very longtime schoolmate with John, so...
Yeah, since kindergarten is a long time. So, we've been together and been business partners for quite a long time. My family has owned property here in Fisherman's Village, or at Punagorda, in PGI since 2000. We've vacationed here all of my life and I'm thrilled to be part of the team that is the steward for Fisherman's Village moving forward and we're excited to discuss all that we've planned and hope, of course, that it's received positively by not only the city council but every resident here in Punagorda. So we appreciate your time.
I think this is the first time I'm actually speaking on this side, which is a little awkward for me, but, okay. Let me go through a little bit here and I won't take, I know this presentation does take a few minutes, so I will go through things some very quickly here. As you came in, you will notice we've put some old pictures up and they will actually be, more pictures in our book will be at the history event this Friday. But one of the things that I want to talk about briefly here is back in 1978, some developers, Don Donaldson and city planners and elected officials came in and secured a long-term lease with the city of Punagorda. At the time, Fisherman's Village would have been about $7 million worth of work to develop that. It's amazing and today I think it's quadruple that number now to build Fisherman's Village today, but 7 million back then was decades of success. There, at the time, let me get my trusty little laser out here. At the time, this was a plan, there's condos here now, but there was a plan at one time to put a event center right here in a beach, but unfortunately, I think Fisherman's Village was ahead of its time and fell, there was a lot of retail that wasn't in there and over the years, that changed and we became very much a full, full retail, sorry. But one of the things that has remained consistent is our marketing strategy. We continue to market and you will see those books that you see just below the screen there, that's one year of advertising with Fisherman's Village. That's all that we do. Kathy's been very diligent about keeping everything, that is magazines, everything that we buy, and always with the tagline, Punagorda. Just some fun pictures here. You will notice that here, this is one of our St. Patty's Day. Most of you will recognize this old man here, that's our resident Santa, you know him, John. Pirates' Day, we have a wiener dog race, we have many other events as you all, everyone in this room. In fact, who here has not been to Fisherman's Village? Okay. Case in point. I think probably one of the biggest things for us is, and the top one here, which you, I did not pay my merchants to come and talk here, they truly believe in Fisherman's Village. We have 41 small businesses that generate $22 million in sales. That is their sales, that's an incredible number. Nowhere in Charlotte County is there a model is as successful as Fisherman's Village. When you have small businesses, they keep dollars in the local economy, they, it promotes entrepreneurship, local pride, attracts other businesses. In Fisherman's Village marketing budget this past year, close your ears, $225,000. That's just what Fisherman's Village spends on marketing. That is not the hundreds of thousands of dollars that some of our other merchants spend marketing and marketing their own businesses and marketing Punagorda. With these 41 small businesses plus our business that we need to run Fisherman's Village, we have 436 employees, which exceeds about $5,441,000. That's an estimate, I think it could be a little bit more, but it is a tremendous amount of payroll that goes in and with payroll comes dollars that go back into the state and into our community. We're very proud of this, named second top attraction in southwest Florida, and that's Gulf Coast Magazine, only next to the casino. We don't have a casino unfortunately, but we're hoping with these changes, we will become the number one destination in southwest Florida. Promoting Punagorda has always been inclusive. Virtually every Punagorda event we support. We are also invested, we are on chamber, we are on chamber boards, we come to city council, we participate. Not only do we, we give back to our community on all levels and we're often asked for our opinion. I know my harbor master is often asked his professional opinion. We do that because we have a love for our community. I think what is important here, Kathy produces almost $100,000 of, or 100,000 brochures. We are in 500 locations throughout the state of Florida, so when we have our tourists coming down, guess where they're stopping, in those rust areas and picking up our brochure? We have billboards, we have radio, we do TV. It is just all-inclusive of what we do. You recognize some of those pirates there? Just a couple of articles. Notice on the right there, it's happening on the harbor. We, that was our tagline that sitting over lunch with Councilwoman Nancy Prafky, we came up with, it's happening on the harbor. The city adopted that and we continue to be a partner and want things to happen within our community. Our website, 83 percent, we just went through a major redo of our website. 83 percent of our website hits are from outside of Charlotte County. 73 percent are outside of Facebook. We have more than 33 million web impressions and it continues to get bigger and bigger. We support the community. There, I don't think there's many, many organizations that we turn down or our merchants turn down and, and what you see up there is just what Fisherman's Village does. It is not what John does at JJ's Top End or what King Fisher does in tickets or what any one of my merchants do. These are just what we do here. You'll also notice that we're in Cuesta Key Beach, we're at Venice Area Chamber of Commerce, Cape Coral and Inglewood and Lakewood Ranch and our desire to be in these areas and join these chambers because this is where visitors go. This is, this is when they're tired at the beach, we want them to have a pamphlet and a brochure of Punagorda and of Fisherman's Village. We promote things like the Symphony, Jazzy Jamers, Vietnam Wall is our most recent contribution. We believe the Vietnam Wall is an important part in a bookend to our visitors coming here and hopefully you'll see in a few minutes why with our Harbor Walk.
So Patty, if you'll advance it for me. What we're planning is to spend some real money to improve Fisherman's Village and we're looking at it in terms of two phases. The first phase is intended, provided we have a positive outcome here today, to begin immediately and it involves some things that just really, really need to be done. Right now, there's no real entrance to the village, there's just kind of a doorway in the side of a building. So we are working right now with the designs and plans to upgrade the entrance with a lighted sign and a more appropriate welcoming for our guests. Additionally, we thought that the Harbor Walk, it would be a nice benefit if the Harbor Walk followed the harbor and are proposing the route that Patty is pointing to that would substantially increase the distance of the Harbor Walk, but most importantly, all that construction design and work would be performed and paid for by us rather than the city, who it's, it's my understanding, budgeted $335,000 to do that work. So additionally, we have this concept in place for the center court. There's, you know, much of what Fisherman's Village is, is, well, it's 35 years old and it looks it. Additionally, the center court, in our view, is a potential hazard. There's lots of steps, people going up and people going down and people falling up and people falling down. So we would like to raise the level of center court to be even with the walkway of the mall. So there are no more steps, there are no more ramps. We would like to open center court to the harbor and sunset views. Right now, we have a bunch of, a bunch of infrastructure, steps and stairs and walkways, plantings, stage, all of which obscure and obstruct what we think is our best asset, which is the view of the harbor and the sunset. We plan to add new shade, canopies and decking so we can get as close to the water as possible and provide places for our guests to gather and enjoy the views and the sunset. Am I missing anything with that, Patty?
No.
Okay. So right now, we're calling that Palm Court. That may not be the final name, but the idea behind it is to be a gathering place that includes things such as movie nights, ability to have presentation screens and AV, movable stage so we can have performances, but it doesn't always have to be positioned in the same place or if there's an event where it's standing only, we can remove the stage and get it out. The idea of being, again, providing new development that looks new, that is more accommodating for our guests, avoids the hazards that exist now and it's just a lot cooler. We have a new tenant to occupy the former Oyster Bar space. The name of the business is Scotty's Brew House. They primarily, or they exclusively operate right now in Indiana. They have 17 very successful restaurants and are, they are incredibly excited to come to Punagorda. Scott Wise, the owner, is pictured in the center.
Sorry.
Or he was.
Sorry.
So that's Scotty and he currently employs over 1,500 people in his restaurants. He is a marketing genius and has restaurants in several locations in Indiana where there are direct flights on Allegiant from that city right to Punagorda. So his tens and tens of thousands of Facebook and Twitter followers would know today, potentially, if there was a positive outcome, that he is officially opening in Punagorda and I think that the amount of internet and social media chatter that would begin instantaneously would, is mind-blowing. He will employ approximately 100 people in the restaurant here and as I said, he's very excited. This is his first location in Florida and we can't wait to have him. The food is great, it's comfort food, just done really well and a very positive organization. I think it'll be a compliment to the village and to the city. So I really don't think the restrooms need to be improved, myself. Not to be too graphic, but I used the restroom, our restroom, the public restroom this morning and I was quick to get out. Everybody knows that it's, they're old, they're tired, they're too small, they don't accommodate the need and so we are committing that we will improve and expand the restrooms to be more appropriate and I think everyone, including our guests, will enjoy that.
I think we had cheers from our mayor when she saw this.
So, again, all those, all those things that we, yeah?
Real quick, Phase One, which was everything that you just saw, our plans are to start that immediately. We have our contractors here in the room that we've been meeting with for over a year now, putting these plans together, putting the budgets together and ready to execute this plan. So we are excited about this and look forward to taking that first step immediately so that it's ready in the fall before the festival of lights.
So you anticipate that all of this will be, Phase One will be completed by Christmas?
We do and that is our goal and we know that if we don't hit those timelines, we're going to have problems because we'll have too many visitors to be under construction at that time. It is going to be a tight schedule, but we are ready to sign contracts and get going immediately.
Thank you.
So Phase Two, we have it labeled as being a five-year plan primarily because it's a big plan and those big plans take quite a while. It's not meaning that we're going to wait around on our heels for five years before we begin this next phase. It's a, we're start planning immediately. The permitting process in some case can be, can be years. So we'll begin work on it now and hope to have it completed as soon as possible. As the previous slide had illustrated, you know, budgets are a funny thing. They usually are incorrect and usually too small, but right now, our base calculations are saying that this Phase Two plan is going to be north of $30 million, maybe as much as, as $40 million. And the idea, as you can see on this, on the right half of the slide, over the new parking, we will construct a concrete deck, so the parking beneath will be shaded, but most importantly, it will provide us a platform on which we can build a new structure that is higher than the mangrove height. The new structure will contain, it's a mixed-use building, so it would contain retail, food and beverage service and new and updated marina facilities. So, much like the bathrooms, I think our public bathrooms, our marina facilities could use a facelift. This will be a brand-new structure. We'd like to bill it as the nicest laundry, the fastest Wi-Fi, the best, the best community gathering space of any yacht basin, yacht club or harbor in, on, in western Florida. If you'd go back once again, Patty. So in addition to those uses for the new building structure, you can see that we have planned a pool with a man-made beach. So the idea here is to have a beach where there is no beach. The pool entry would be a zero-entry pool, so the sand that is the beach transitions to the water and then the edge of the pool would be a negative-edge pool, so it flows down and provides a water feature for those people walking along the Harbor Walk. So we think the idea of having your feet in the sand, maybe a cocktail in your hand, an appetizer at your table, kids in the pool and a view of the harbor is a neat idea and we think it would be embraced and we think it would be highly marketable. Advance now. So this is obviously a stock image, but that would be the idea of what you see with the negative-edge pool, that the water, the, the pool water transitions visually into the harbor water and we bring those two elements together. Obviously, this is also a stock image of a beach, but we, we like the idea of people having a reason to stay for long periods of time, to vacation for extended periods and have a place to recreate. As I mentioned, we'd like to, in that building, include new facilities for our yacht basin customers that we think would be exceptional and compelling and set us apart for other potential destinations in southwest Florida. We have a parking problem. These plans add approximately 150 new parking spaces, which is about as good as I think we're going to be able to do.
It's a tag team here. Let me just get to where I am. It's, it is great for Punagorda. More new businesses, more jobs, more tax revenue. It's a destination, increased marketing for Punagorda, more dining and shopping options for our residents. The Harbor Walk especially is in line with Punagorda's vision. More frequent and higher entertainment and events. This is the property as it sits today and some of you may know and some of you may not know. Fisherman's Village ATA Fishville owns the pink property, which you see here and here and the parcel right in through here. What we're asking the city of Punagorda today is to purchase the land that is in green Just before I show you the next slide, I'd like to go off my PowerPoint presentation for just a minute. I'd like you to think back to the five council members in 1975 when they voted to allow the developers to create what we now know today as Fisherman's Village. I took you on a journey through our past, our present and now our future. Much like those council members 35 years ago, you have the ability to change the economy of Punagorda. We have been a proven entity time and time again. Hundreds of thousands of dollars invested in this community over the years, countless events, festivals and millions upon millions of smiles on our visitors. Today, it's up to you and we kindly and respectfully request your support to sell us the leased property and dedicate the road known as Reta Esplanade to Fisherman's Village to be used for additional parking. I thank you for your time today and we are open to your questions and comments.
One thing I'd like to add there.
Oh, okay.
One thing that I think is important to add is the intentions of ownership. You know, over the last three years, as John had mentioned, we've had the opportunity to really come to understand the city and Fisherman's Village and what we can do to enhance the value of Fisherman's Village and frankly, these are the best ideas that we came, came up with, but we're not the smartest guys in the world, but we, we think it's a good plan. There's been concern about whether or not, you know, we want to secure the property and then flip it for a profit. There's been concern that we're going to say all these things and do none of them. Those concerns are, I mean, those are reasonable concerns, but I'm here to say that that is not our, none of those things are our intention. We've fallen in love with Fisherman's Village, John and his family. Many people that are here weren't born here, they moved here. John and I have those wishes ourselves in retirement, which is why our family has a lot in PGI and one of the reasons why John purchased the property. So, long story short, we feel like we're in here for the long haul and our next generation and any of the concerns related to the business element of this transaction, we're not only willing, but we're happy to include language in the purchase that states that we're going to use it as Fisherman's Village and that we're committed to make these improvements and that we're not in it to flip it. And I'm sure that the city attorney and our attorney can easily work through that language because our, our intentions are good and honest.
Thank you. Questions?
Who wants to go first?
Yes, Rachel.
I guess I'll start. Sorry, I have a tic-tac in my mouth. Obviously, the general concepts are extremely exciting. I mean, just the dollar amount you're talking about investing is, is something very substantial for our city. Patty has been, no, I'm just speaking to you. Obviously, the marketing, worked with Kathy on the TDC, the community involvement, all of those pieces are already there. So, I mean, I don't think there's any dispute of most of the stuff that you talked about that Fisherman's Village is Punagorda and Punagorda is Fisherman's Village. I mean, the jobs alone, my mother-in-law had a shop there, you know, and she's downtown now. Just the infusion of retail businesses, I've seen the other way too. People started downtown and now they're at the village, so there's a great synergy between all the merchants in our town. The other thing that Fisherman's Village has been able to do that others have not is off-season events. I mean, the Pirate Fest and others that have gone on there are very popular. They give the local people something to do when the summer is kind of quiet. So you've been very successful with that and the other thing that I think that you've been able to do, which we've struggled with downtown, is occupancy and, you know, Fisherman's Village wasn't, wasn't doing a great job of management and ownership then. They would not have basically 100% occupancy waiting lists apart from the restaurant, who was there for 20 years. I mean, that was 30 years that restaurant was there before they left. So I think they've been very successful in, in what they've been able to do. Unfortunately, we all sat one-on-one with the owners and with Patty and went through this presentation and we were able to voice concerns to them and one concern is that, you know, two years ago, there was plans of this grandiose entrance and this and that and center court and there was proposals even made that that was going to happen and it didn't. So I think I'm a little gun-shy, you know, but we, we talked that out and I would like to know, and I, what I shared with the owners is that for me, this is a forever decision. If we decide to sell this property, it's out of the city's control forever, basically, which I definitely think we should put a First Rite of Refusal and a Clawback, so if, if something did happen, we could get it back. But, you know, as far as trying to extend the lease, which they've indicated does not work for them as far as the financing and the infusion of money, which I understand, the sale of the property is a, is a forever decision that I want to be able to live with and be able to explain why I supported something like that. And along that line, first to Howard and then to David, I talked to Terry Tubbs, you know, what can we do long-term? What can we do to put the language in there? Can we do a planned development? Can we put the language in, in the deed? I mean, all of those details are, are what I'm worried about. I'm not really worried about general concepts because I, I do agree with the infusion of, of the capital and the excitement that everything would bring to Punagorda. The other thing that I wanted to know is the dedication of the road, how have we handled that in the past? So that would be another question that I have. And for Howard, I would just like for you to just give a little historical, short historical perspective on past council decisions, because obviously, the Lashley Crab House is on a land lease and Fisherman's Village is on a land lease and the Bo Club is on a land lease. What, what, what has the past process been for councils to go in a sale versus a land-lease direction? Is that enough?
Yeah. Who wants to start?
Not really. Well, first of all, the, the idea to make it happen, should it be the city council's desire to go forward with this, is what I'll certainly take to heart. The... go forward with this, is what I'll certainly take to heart. As the saying goes, the devil is certainly in the details. When I, it wasn't long when I first became the city attorney here, that the big concern was how to get the city marketplace to abide by the terms of its agreement that was thought to be an ironclad agreement with all kinds of milestones, and penalties, and things of that nature, which it didn't turn out to be as ironclad as it was thought to have been. And so, as I was reviewing that agreement, and I was putting myself in the shoes of the city attorney, or the, I guess it was, actually, it was outside counsel, special counsel that negotiated that, or drafted the city. Thank God, you know, what a terrible job he did. And I don't want to be in the position down the road of somebody saying that with respect to me. So it really will be a very tough job to make sure that the agreement that we work out is one that no one will have any regrets. I mean, I appreciate the fact that the group is doing a great job now. I think a lot of that is attributable to Patty, and Patty deserves a raise or double or triple when she comes. And Patty, I will not hold against you the fact that when I first came to Punta Gorda to live, I lived on my sailboat at Fisherman's Village, and you threw me out. And probably rightly so, so I don't hold that against you at all. And so, what I have to do is, and my wife hates this about me as an attorney, because you have to think this way, sometimes throw a wet blanket on things, because as well-intentioned as the current owner may be, there may be unforeseen circumstances that prevent them from fulfilling their obligations, or I know it's not their intention to flip, but they might get an offer that they can't refuse. And I heard earlier with the public comments coming up, that there's a huge distinction between the new owners, who are good, and the old owners, who are bad. And how do we prevent old owners coming back in the future? And I don't really think that there's an opportunity to prevent the new owners from selling to somebody else. We can put into the contract that, you know, if they're going to assign or sell it, they've got to get our approval, but that's, you know, a difficult thing to really enforce. So, I mean, that's really what we're going to have to do, is negotiate. I'm going to ask the, I'm going to ask if this, in fact, is the desire of the council. For you guys to give me the benchmarks, the milestones, that you want to be able to meet, and then we'll figure out how to make sure that they're met, and if they're not met, then we get the property back. But even then, you just have to understand that what you put in writing, as tight as you might write it, if the other side wants to litigate it, even though it's black and white, you know, it may be very difficult to enforce in a timely fashion without expense to the city. So it's, you know, it really is going to be a task that I hope we can work together and achieve. I'll give you a little anecdote. Sarasota, I remember when there was rumors of the Ritz-Carlton coming and building in Sarasota. And no one would believe that the Ritz-Carlton would actually build in Sarasota. It might not be their, like, their flagship type, there's different levels, and they're probably going to give us, like, the run-of-the-mill one. And there was a lot of skepticism. It actually came to be that Ritz-Carlton built a beautiful hotel, and I think a beach complex as well, that amazed everyone, and actually upgraded the city quite a bit. I mean, Ritz-Carlton is attributed to doing a lot of good things just by the fact that they were there. I think that Fisherman's Village could do very much the same thing, and even though there might be some skepticism, it should be, like, healthy skepticism. But we need to put a contract together that makes sure that the commitments, as well-meaning as they might be, actually come to be. And I'm hoping that I'm up to that task. The other question that I have, and hopefully we'll hear from the appraiser, is with respect to the valuation. And I'm not an expert in valuation, but I had some questions about the valuation, and this may not be the time, but...
I think that's a good segue. I think that would be a good segue to hear from our appraiser. I believe Michael Pope is here.
He's coming through the door.
Thank you. We had asked Mr. Pope to be available, because, first of all, within the appraisal that we received, there were two different market values placed on it. One was a fee simple interest, and the other was a lease fee interest. And for clarification for our audience, and for anyone who looks at that appraisal in the future, to say, "Well, gee, it had a market value fee simple interest of $6,290,000, and here we're accepting the lease fee interest of $3,510,000." So I'd really like to get clarity on that, and then any other questions that you might have.
Okay. The fee simple value is if the property is unencumbered and sitting there basically vacant today, and the property owner can do whatever they want to with it. Okay, that's not the case. There's encumbrances on the property. There's a lease, I think it's got a little over 13 years left. And the lease, the lease rate is substantially below market. The contract rent, I think, is approximately $56,307. Market rent for that property would be somewhere between $440,300 and $629,000 a year. So there's a big deficit between the contract rent and what market rent would be. And that's what's reduced the value from a fee simple value of $6,290,000 to the lease fee value of $3,510,000. It's basically all due to the below-market lease rate.
Thank you. And as Patty showed you in this picture here, the, there are, again, variations or the differences between what the city owns and what Fishville owns currently. So that, again, is one of the reasons the properties are encumbered. We would not be able to, again, we would have to either purchase all their property, or they purchase our property. And that's what they're asking for now, is to purchase the property that the city owns, and without the lease. Your questions?
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm not an expert in valuation, but I think if I understand what you're saying, basically is that because the lease that would be assumed by the next purchaser is below-market value, the next purchaser would be essentially losing money for the remaining term of the lease compared to what they could be making if they had the opportunity to get market value for the properties that they're selling.
Exactly.
All right. But if the, if the person you're selling the property to is the beneficiary of the below-market valued rents, how does that negatively affect the value of the land itself? And the way I look at it is that not only are they getting the benefit of below-market rent payments that they have to pay currently, but you've devalued, perhaps that's not the right word, but the actual land itself by $3 million. So they're going to get $3 million as a result of the, $3 million discount on the land that we, that the city owns, by virtue of the fact that they're paying below-market rent. And that just doesn't seem to make sense to me.
Well, the definition of market value is typically motivated buyer and seller. And the situation that you just described is not the definition of market value. It's obviously worth, you know, more to them than it would be to someone else, because every year from here on out, for 13 years, the lease fee value, okay, is going to go up, and their interest, which is the leasehold interest, is going to go down. And, you know, at the end of 13 and a half years, the value's going to be probably, you know, I'm speculating, because it's 13 years in the future, it's going to be close to, you know, $6 million or higher. So, yeah, it's definitely more valuable to them than it would be to someone else. Okay, then if you sold to me, if I'm buying it, you know, I'm going to basically get a one, less than a 1% return on my money for 13 years. If they buy it, they're going to, it's going to create value to what they already own. See, that's, and you're, from your situation, it's a negotiation. Okay? But as far as, you know, you asked me to appraise, and you asked the other two appraisers to appraise the market value of the property, the lease fee value of the property, and that's what it is, looking at a arms-length transaction between a buyer and a seller.
Okay. But now, this does not necessar, I mean, this does not stand in the same shoes as if we were going to be selling it to someone who isn't currently leasing the property at Fishville. If we waited, if we waited to the end of the term...
Right.
Okay? That property is going to be worth $6 million plus. And so, if we sell it now, we're only going to be getting $3 million.
Right, $3 million.
Now, that's not to discount the value that Fishville gives to the city. I'm not trying to get into any of that, and maybe it's worth the $3 million. But I'm just, I'm just saying that the land never goes away, and it's going to increase in value more than likely. And so, again, there, I just want to do it, explain that part. I'm not trying to argue it, but it is something that I think needs to be explained better.
If you put a "For Sale" sign out there today, okay, and you exclude the group here...
Excuse me?
Okay. The $3,051,000 is, you know, represents what you're probably going to get based on the income stream that that buyer's going to get. He's sitting on a $6 million property, but he's not going to get any return on it, or he's going to get a marginal return for the next 13 years.
So what you're saying is, it really wouldn't make any sense for us to sell it to anybody else, because...
Yeah, exactly, because, you know, anybody else, it, you know, they're going to have to be, somebody's land banking or something, you know, thinking in the future, you know, 13 years from now, you know, maybe this, it probably won't even cover the taxes, you know, the income that's coming in.
And again, the reason why it's not worth it for us to sell it to anybody else is because we're renting it for below-market value.
Yeah, that's probably one of the lowest land leases that I've ever seen. I mean, it's...
Well, it is also a 50-year land lease that was, again, picked up many, many years ago.
I mean, I've been appraising 30 years. I mean, it's less than Lashley Crab House's lease for 20,000 square feet, and this is, like, seven acres, so...
Does anyone have any other questions of our appraiser?
No.
Well, just along that line, I read the minutes of the meetings of when they were crafting that land lease, and they were very, they struggled with it themselves in trying to build in a CPI, and how could they keep up with the value of dollar? They had no way to know, you know, 50 years down the road. But sometime, I would like you to talk about land lease versus sale, and why we've gone in that direction in the past, so we can just kind of absorb that, because none of us were here during any of those deals.
Other questions of the appraiser, or... Okay, thank you, Mr. Pope.
One thing I will say, typically, land leases, even written back in those days, had clauses that every five or 10 years, the property's reappraised, and the rental rate is reestablished. So that's something I would say that would be prudent if you go that route, definitely. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Howard?
The Boat Club lease runs out in 2021. It is city-owned property. The Boat Club was the one who put all the improvements to build their building. It reverts back to the city in 2021 if, unless we decide to negotiate another term for the Boat Club, which we all talk about a waterfront activity center. That was the genesis back then for that one. However, the Crab House is totally different. Crab House, when we redid Lashley Park, we had that particular piece next to the Marina Building set aside for some type of a mixed use. And we went out for proposals, and the Crab House folks came back with a proposal, and we negotiated a long-term land lease rather than an outright sale. It's right there as part of the park. We, at that time, approached it from a land lease standpoint. Now, that's a totally different payment schedule. It's more up-to-date. They pay us an annual amount that goes up by the CPI with no restrictions. Every year, it goes up by the CPI, no restrictions. Now, the CPI has been fairly low. If the CPI does increase over the next, who knows when, five, 10, 20 years, that's what the payment comes up. And then after 50 years, it gets reappraised. So the payments that the Crab House provides the city is, well, even now, it's substantially more than what Fisherman's Village gives us. But again, Fisherman's Village was done back in 1978, '77. There was nothing there. It was an incentive, I presume, that council gave for something to happen, and it succeeded. So I'm, we're not going to sit here and debate what happened back then. With the Crab House, they are paying, they are paying market rents that goes up by the CPI unencumbered each year.
Does that answer your question? Okay, yes.
I see this a little bit differently. Even, I mean, I'll address the Crab House. We built Lashley Park there, we built all the parking, they built their building, they're leasing there. The city put in a lot of money there. Back in the '70s, the city's not put any money into Fisherman's Village at all. It's always been private funds. Yes, they got a sweetheart deal on the rent. It was a blighted area on the city. People, when PGI was developed, the first time I went to Fisherman's Village was in '88, so it had come, you know, come up then, but still not what it is today. People, realtors would avoid going through downtown Punta Gorda and through that area, you know, just to not have people see that area. So they've done a great job out there. I think of it, as an entrepreneur, I have met these two and talked to them, their vision for this is amazing. What has happened over the last 30 years is exactly what we're trying to happen. We have a whole economic development company, or department in the county, who would kill to have ATA Fishville come to town. Tries to get them to come here. Will you do this? Will you do that? They are marketing us, we have no marketing program. I believe they bring more people here than our TDC, than our economic development, than anyone else, and what they're planning is going to double that. Now, I believe that you can do it, and I think that, and if you can't, reach out and get someone who can help you. Come up with the agreement that we need to not, if something happens beyond their control and they can't do or fulfill what we need as a city, then we need to have the property back. But if they do, or if the owners, it's not necessarily them, it's the piece of property that has the restrictions on it. The land use, it always has to remain a mall, a tourist attraction, what we have here. If we didn't have Fisherman's Village, we would be a ghost town. Let's be honest. They have brought, they have put us on the map, not just in the United States, all over. They have helped 41 businesses become very successful. I would love, and what would we give someone like them to take over the city marketplace? To build a Fisherman's Village at City Marketplace? I mean, what kind of concessions would we offer them? You know, so even if you say, "Okay, it's not encumbered, it's worth $6 million," they're putting in way more than that. They're marketing us more way than that, and we haven't given them anything. They've done it, not just them, the previous owners have done it all along. Marketed that place, helped the business owners be successful there. If you want to be successful, and you're an entrepreneur, you put your business at Fisherman's Village, because you know they're going to help you be successful. I want entrepreneurs like them in this town, and Scotty, I mean, he's another guy. It's amazing. I've looked this guy up, he's right. The minute he finds out he's going to be here, we're going to have thousands of people hearing about Punta Gorda, and that Scotty's coming to Fisherman's Village. And he had an opportunity to go to Fort Myers, to other places. He chose Fisherman's Village, not Punta Gorda, Fisherman's Village, and they made that happen. So obviously, I'm in favor of it.
Nancy? I didn't really get that. Do you want to clarify that? Nancy?
I would agree with Kim. Fisherman's Village attracts a lot of people here and I'm one of them. I'm here because I spent a week in Fisherman's Village and my, I came here kicking and screaming, figuratively speaking, because my husband fell in love with Punta Gorda. And so, it does have the opportunity to have long-term impacts on people's lives. And it is, it's going to have a huge impact on this community and the return on investment is going to increase the taxable values. I've had people ask me questions about their commitment. Jeremy was very forthright in being able to, you know, speak to their level of commitment to the community and what they intend to do. And I think that we should absolutely put as much in writing and make it as tight as possible. I also agree with Kim in the fact that we need to make sure that this is public access in perpetuity. I've had some people speak to me about the intent of the founders of Punta Gorda to protect the waterfront. And I like the idea of having the Harbor Walk go around Fisherman's Village because it increases public access. And I don't know if there's any language in which can be incorporated into that. I know that with the four points, the four points provided it, but I think that's, that belongs to the city. So, I don't know if there's something there that is a point of discussion about who would then ultimately own the Harbor Walk. But it's something that needs to be incorporated so we continue to have public access to the waterfront. And I think, you know, some of these, as far as the design elements, the engineering of the Harbor Walk, we talked about 10 feet minimum, those kinds of things, those are details that can be worked out. But Kim, you said it great. And I've consternated over the numbers and I've come to the conclusion that we could wait 13 years and try to get $6 million for it, but we're going to lose out on a huge economic investment in this community. And I think that it's critical for us to do this.
Tom?
Basically in agreement with both Kim and Nancy on this. And it's appropriate to have this powerpoint on the screen at this point right now. It would be very difficult for this council or any future council to negotiate a deal to sell that property when a substantial part of it is already owned by Fisherman's Village. Your negotiating strength is really not there. And to David, after negotiating a lease with Morgan Stanley, I have all the confidence in the world. I would also like to pick up on Nancy's comment about the possibility of creating an easement to accommodate a Harbor Walk on the property, that it's something that we would have in perpetuity if an issue ever came up that would separate us.
Okay. What I am hearing then is that we're generally, we are in agreement that we want to move forward. Is this consensus? Okay, what I would like for us to talk about now then is what are the criteria that we want to ensure are in our, in our plan? Because the one thing I think that we want to, as I heard us all speak and even as our friends here have talked about, the ambiance of Fisherman's Village. You know, its character, we want it to retain the retail, the waterfront restaurants, the, again, the Harbor Walk, the attraction kind of thing. So, we need to be able to build that in. And I'm not sure what that was called. I think our staff are talking about rezoning it to a planned development, if that, if that would work. But we need to find a way to incorporate that, that piece of it. And also, I think, you know, does it get incorporated into the deed, a reverter clause, so that if they do not fulfill their commitments, that the property reverts back to the city? Is that in agreement? Rachel?
Yes, whichever is stronger or both, the deed, the PD. I mean, with the PD, I would guess that there would be more hearings and such that, you know, that would be another opportunity for details to get hashed out, which I would like to see. I don't know your, your take on that, if you think it's stronger or not or something we should pursue or you think you could...
To some extent, I'd like to try to keep it as simple as possible. The more you put into it, the more arguments you can have that, you know, that thwart enforcement. But for example, if you, if you wanted to have a cap on the number of rental units for overnight weekend stays as opposed to avoiding the opportunity for it to become condos for long-term stays, you can address that in the contract, for example. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be rezoned unless that's what they want or our planning department says that's what we need.
Now, I don't know about the rest of you. I don't mind if there are condos as long as the remaining part is still accessible, public activities, retail...
Well, and what I meant was, put a limit as to the number. You don't want to see those shops go and that the whole thing be a condominium. So, you need to put some sort of verify or number... Or something that, that we would be able to hold them to so that your vision will be consistent with their vision and we can make sure that it remains that way.
I mean, can it be, the lower level is always a retail...
Would that be agreeable?
Well, I'd comment on that. If they're building, if their plans are putting in an additional building where the tenants' courts currently exist, there may be a second story above parking to accommodate retail.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
We can't be so restrictive to, they don't want to get into their business and...
Right.
We can't be so restrictive either because, let's face it, those buildings are not, hopefully they last long, but eventually they're going to, they're going to get, like, their restroom's going to have the end of the usable life and they're going to have to, you know, redo...
Right.
John, did you want to make a comment?
Would you mind? Would it be reasonable to say that you all want to make sure that we retain as much retail in the future as we have right now?
Yes, and more if possible.
And more if possible.
Actually, David had a good idea. Part of the lease needs to be that you will take over City Marketplace in...
And here are a list of requests for that one.
You seem to be the only one able to bring anyone to town, so...
I'd like to see that list of requests, it may be workable.
All right, I think that's, that's a good suggestion. Retain as much retail as possible and more...
Or maybe a percentage. Because if you have more retail and you have, you know, if I were you, I'd build more condos on top of my new building. I mean, I could see it being a condo, I could see having a little, you know, market where people might want to retire and that...
I will say, from my experience, second and third story retail, if you ever did go vertical, doesn't work. Most consumers don't want to climb stairs and shop, so it's really the ground floor that works really well for retail. And that's what I would always envision that property being and having.
So, I think, are we good with retaining as much retail as is currently there?
What's your total square footage of retail currently? 60, 70,000 square feet of retail? So, maybe we could write in the contract, as you're saying, the simpler the better. If it's cut and dry, it's hard to litigate over. If you have 70,000 square feet of retail, you've met the mark and if you don't, you haven't.
Do you, do you already have a development plan in mind?
You know, we don't, other than the improvements and bringing Scottys in. The center court improvements, the front entry, the Harbor Walk and bringing Scottys in. The Phase Two is all conceptual. It hasn't even gone through an architect at this time. It's gone through a graphic designer saying, "Hey, what would it look like to put a building in this area?" And it's a, a great area to put a building, but we have not taken it through to another step.
Yes, Tom?
Could you generally outline what Phase Two in your minds consists of at this point in time? I see a building and I see improvements to the Marina beyond, or not even to the Marina, but I see a building. What beyond the building are you envisioning?
Okay. So, you know, as part of Phase Two, we will be demolishing the current Marina building, Marina facilities and we'll have to replace the...